Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our joint meeting with the Covington Chamber of Commerce Board, the Covington Economic Development Council, and the Covington City Council. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order, and I'll have everybody, we'll just start down with Jean and just go around the table and introduce ourselves and who you are with.
Beth Porter, council member.
Joseph Momo, council.
Jennifer Hartzellhausen, council.
Jeff Wagner, Mayor Covington.
Josh Lyons, CEDIS.
Scott Vice, dual hat, CEDIS and board member.
Sean Smith, I'm on the council.
Von Diddy and CEDIS.
Regan Bulley, city manager and CEDIS.
And with that, and I thank you all for introducing yourselves. We don't have anybody online. I know we have several people that are still planning on attending. With that, I am going to turn it over to Josh Lyons, our co-chair for the Economic Development Council. Welcome.
Well, thank you. All right, guys, so to start with, this is just maybe going to be a more in-depth update on kind of what we've been updating you on for the last several months, particularly the council, chamber board. I think Dana's probably been updating you a little bit on our activities. I'm not exactly sure how much, so I'll summarize very quickly. One of the primary activities of CEDIS for several years now has been to continue to build upon the activity that resulted in the branding initiative that got us our new kind of Covington logo and the moniker of growing towards greatness. And that was something that came out of CEDIS, and so we've been really working hard over the last several years, and that's resulted in a number of different initiatives to basically backfill the concept. We got, I think, in some ways, when you're branding something, logo and moniker or a slogan is important, but then you really, if you're going to go start with that, you have to backfill. What does that brand mean? You have to create meaning around it for people that you intend to consume that brand. What's the feeling? What's the emotion that evokes? What, how does that drive the, you know, its business? How does that drive your business in what you're trying to present an image, but also in product, right? So CEDIS has really taken on the role of trying to do that work as it relates to commerce particularly. So not the most intuitive, I guess, initiative, but that at one point resulted in Karma, our city's ambassador. And and the idea was is to start building some personality around Covington and really to create even a communication tool to express that personality and to show some of the whimsical and fun nature that we can in the city. So we got through that, and I think that's frankly, I think that's going really well. I see Karma presented in a whole slew of ways in terms of communication, whether it be city communication or various social media outlets or in different types of events, that type of thing. So I'm really happy with how that's going. Since that initiative, we've turned our attention more to considering how do we start to provide some personality to the actual, I guess, commercial district that currently exists in Covington, which I would call the traditional downtown core, particularly thinking about how does the downtown core progress and continue to grow against the backdrop of a new competing commercial space that's going to be shiny, new, cool, and have all kinds of features that are going to draw people to that? How does the downtown downtown core coexist with that concept? And so what we've settled on is the idea of perhaps in the vein of building something that might disrupt the natural curve of progression that you might see in other cities where you see growth, some level of stabilization, then ultimately decline because infrastructure ages and it's not as cool and people look elsewhere, et cetera, et cetera. How do we start to address that proactively? And we settled upon the concept of creating some kind of downtown association that would be defined as a certain district that would work to develop its own identity and hope to develop some sort of magnetic product, if you will, that could continue to regenerate itself. So that has been those initial discussions of a downtown association had resulted in us doing a lot of research around what does that mean? What does that look like? We worked with outside organizations, the biggest one being the International Downtown Association, who's kind of providing some guidance for us. And it really started with defining the district itself, which you'll see on page two of your agenda. What you find inside the blue the blue area is what you would most likely consider and typically think of as a downtown Covington core. This is something that probably deserves some definition for our chamber friends. A downtown association is going to be different than a chamber. First of all, it's going to focus on a very specific geographic area. And it's going to it's going to, in particular, work with and think about our businesses on the, I think, more on the land ownership side. So, for example, we were talking to Costco the other day, and one of our big initiatives around the downtown association is to create a clean, safe, welcome concept that we could, that's kind of our launching initiative with a downtown association. We spoke with the managers of the store, not the highest level of Costco, and they're like, well, we are kind of insulated from any of those issues that you might be talking about. We don't have the same problem as maybe like the Ulta or, you know, that type of thing because of the way, you know, it was almost like, you know, we're smarter than the average. We're membership-based. We have people at the door, you know, we're monitoring the ins and outs at one point in time, right? And they are on that, to that degree, insulated, but what we're trying to speak to them at the level of is how do we get together in the downtown core and make sure that in 20 years, the investment you've made of being a very big part of the downtown core of Covington, being landowners in Covington, how do we protect that investment? How do we make sure that 20 years from now, you're as glad to be a property owner in this downtown core as you are today? And some of those small, not small, some of those items that they were talking about in terms of the crime that might be happening elsewhere can lead to a degradation of the entire whole that they are not insulated from. So we, so we are working with business owners and property owners that level where obviously the chamber is working directly with the businesses, helping to support direct businesses, whether they're landowners or tenants or whatever. This is, and I think the biggest difference is this is the targeted geographic area that's thinking 20, 30 years down there. Anybody see this having to add? Am I describing that right?
Great job. Keep going.
Thank you. I just think, I think it's really important. I want to make sure, because Dana has done a good job of questioning. He does, she wants to make sure we're not overlapping and just creating a competitor to the chamber. And so in our minds and CEDIS, we're very clear that this is not, this is outside of the chamber and a necessary level of support. So, cool. So right now, there's a letter, we've created kind of what we call our critical mass. We've gotten some really good support from some very important people in Covington in terms of the various pieces of commercial land out there. The group that manages what I would call the Safeway complex, which is enormous. I don't know what the exact name of that is. They've been very interested, involved. Justin, of course, you all know his level of Covington, has been very involved. I think the group that somehow, I don't know what that space is, but like the the space that Planet Fitness is in, whatever that is, we've had some good dialogue with people there. So we're starting to collect a critical mass of people that are supporting us, and now it's a matter of going through the, kind of some of the administrative work of setting up the organization so that you can actually have a bank account and at least, you know, fund the financial needs of that organization and whatnot. So it's a pretty big lift, to be honest with you, and there's a lot to do. But I think slow and steady wins the race here. And I think what we're committed to is making sure we're communicating the need, building the support, and then growing it at the speed that makes sense. Three questions around that concept. This is the place to ask more detailed ideas or, you know, questions around the downtown association, what it would be, what would drive the population, et cetera.
So I guess one of the questions that I have is what is the end? What is your vision? I know that was a question you all had for us. But is it to drive outside customers in, to drive business? I mean, we're creating this vibrant, we all have a vision of a downtown Covington that has like eat and shop and hang out with the family, and like, that's kind of a vibe we've been talking about.
Yeah.
So how do we, how do we do that? And tap into customers that don't live in Covington so that people want to flock to that area? And then it may also then encourage other different types of businesses to come in when they say, hey, people want to go to Covington because they like the downtown, they like the feel of it. Is that sort of what you're?
It's exactly right. So one of the biggest, one of the most tangible things that, right now, that downtown associations are doing is that they are self-funding efforts on the lines of what we've been talking about around clean, safe, welcome, right? So, and that is, I don't think it's on here, yeah. One of the, so one of the cool. So this is, this is, if you took Psych 105 and college, this is Maslow's hierarchy of needs scale, but it's for cities and commerce. And so it lists various things that are necessary. So, you know, like in the real psychology, you have to feel safe before you can go to a higher level of of being able to function, right? So it's the same thing here. There is a basic level of need that must be present in order for a city and a commercial district to flourish, and obviously clean, safe. And then we add welcome is one of the foundational needs. So in a downtown association, many of them today are stepping in to fill that need. Now, beyond that, once you get that down, then you're looking to reach some level of consensus around a common idea, goal, marketing plan. You know, I think one of the better examples of before downtown associations were even defined or had a name would be what Leavenworth did in terms of establishing, I think they're a great example. They, I don't even think they knew it at the time, but they were blazing a trail of how do you create commerce that regenerates itself? But you have to have a lot of things in place to get that done, and I think the downtown association ultimately is how we, what we work through to be able to start doing some of that work. So now, now let's give an example. So one of the things that we identified through CEDIS was we had some landowners that were neglecting their property. They weren't keeping up the same way as some of the others were. So we have worked through Reagan's help. We have worked through like Justin suggesting as a, as a common landowner, hey, I found that this has been really good for me type thing. If we had a downtown association, we could start to, it's almost like, I would almost like call it like a commercial HOA, right? So you all belong to this, and there's a, there's a community benefit to that, but there's also some rules. And you got to mow your grass and you got to weed your flower beds, right? Something like that.
If I might just follow up. That's okay. And so how would, how would that tie into the municipal code? I mean, because there's peer pressure, right, which is kind of what you're talking about. But you can only go so far, you know, if there isn't a code written that can put a little bit more meat behind it.
Yeah.
Is that something that?
Maybe I could address that. So where we're at on this kind of bottom rung, the foundation, the pyramid is the clean and safe, right? And then it works its way up to the downtown association could sponsor festivals and events and unification projects. And keep in mind that all these are really successful when they've got a great partnership with the
Yes.
What Josh is talking about those things wouldn't be able to happen without that as far as where we're at on like this foundational clean, safe, it's all going to be on private property, so nothing would have to change.
So I appreciate all that. I've got a couple of reactions to what you guys are coming forward. I definitely think having a more targeted group advocating for the downtown is is needed, and it's going, I think it's really going to help to revitalize the core. I was just in Renton this last weekend, kind of their old part, I don't know if it was the historic part, but anyway, my daughter has found a rock shop there that she just likes going to. So we went, and then I had never been there. I walked around, other than the landing, and I was like, wow, this is really cool. And I would like or see some type in the future, that type of kind of eclectic, funky, different type stores. We went to an antique shop, bookstore, coffee shop, and a rock shop, you know, and it was just all foot traffic, the whole thing, and I'll probably go back. So so I'm probably not telling you anything you don't want to hear, but I'm getting back on what Beth just said. I think along with clean self and welcoming, it needs to be attractive. And you ultimately, yes, you can get it through peer pressure or shame, but I would see that this downtown association at some point would create a ground swell for codify though. So one of the things that's different about these other cities is they've brought the businesses to the street. And so that's one of the things that I think is is that's kind of one of, every, all of our stores are well back from the road. And there you see just, it's like an auto deal shop of cars, and that's people's impression. It's like, oh, this is a trial, I'll stop here unless I need to go to Costco. I would, maybe this is 10 years down the road, require that businesses when they develop have to be at the road and the parking's in, you know, or whatever. And so so I think if we can get someone, you know, maybe come out from Leavenworth, maybe talk about how they did that, what they, what are the lessons they've learned? How did the businesses land on that theme or whatever? That would be great to prepare in words. The one question, I'll stop filibustering, is I noticed that the town center that we eventually might develop is not within the boundary of your downtown association. Is that by design or because there's nothing there? Or I'm just wondering, or is there a possibility in the future to expand and bring that in?
You can always expand.
It is by design, but it's not. These were Josh and Justin, I kind of went through several different iterations of what this should be. The goal was to have it really reflect when people think of, what's, yeah, oh, yeah, thank you.
When people really think of what's, what's the downtown core in Covington right now? Let's identify that, and then we can build upon it. But it's got to be narrow enough at this point that with this little grassroots group we've got, we can garner enough support and to really get these property and business owners to vote to assess themselves.
Yes.
Right? That's kind of the key with everything founders right now. And if we have a bunch of empty properties included in that, that would be a much harder task that could eventually be. That's it.
So it's sounding like you're going to file a nonprofit status? And then you mentioned a marketing plan. I'm wondering if the potential and plan is there to potentially influence what type of technique comes about? Or tapioca shops and ice cream shops in order to get a current vibe that everybody wants to visit and have this experience? It's not by seeing the same thing over and over again. So I'm, and that leads to like that party we were just like, we talked about. I'm curious if that potential is there, and if so, what are steps that would allow a city or a nonprofit to do something like that so we can apply that?
Absolutely. So I think that's, you know, that's the ultimate vision where I talked about interrupting that natural curve that exists where you see growth, stability, and then decline is how do we create a vision for the downtown core that people can get behind and ultimately help recruit the businesses that make sense for that vision? And so there would be, you know, a lot of downtown associations or people involved with them. You have a recruiting arm. They go out and actively seek and bring in businesses to to be part of that, I guess, that vision. If you're asking what, what the city can do as well, then it's working hand in hand with the, one thing that I get a little uncomfortable with is when we start dictating what has to happen. Because if the vision is right and the, you know, Reagan has a really eloquent term for CEDIS in economic gardening. If we're doing the right economic gardening, then the appropriate plants grow, right? And the weeds just kind of go away. That's really what I think we're talking about doing here. And, you know, I'll say right now, there is a sticky place even currently with the current downtown core in some of the interests you're talking about. So the general reputation of Covington is Covington hate stripe. And if you want to do one, you better be prepared for a headache and fall out of your wallet. There is usable land in these, in these sea of parking lots that we're talking about that could potentially bring in, so there are, there's a new there's a new class of coffee shops showing up that ultimately that of like kids today, if you had a Kentwood group of Kentwood kids, they would say, we want a gravity coffee in Covington, and we want it today. And, and right now, most of the core that we have defined here could not do that. Even though we have plenty of parking lot space to do it. So that would be an example of how the city could also be involved in this discussion.
We have development codes that were put in place well before I even started here that put place pretty high threshold requirements on drive-throughs. So they've got to be shielded, they can't be in certain areas, they can't face the street, you know, things like that. So that's why.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that would be one way to change it. Move the stores up, then we can relax the driver in behind it.
There you go. Yeah.
One of the things I was thinking about, and I guess this sort of speaks to the Leavenworth scenario. I, when I think about vibrant downtown, I think about a marketplace scenario. And when I, we go downtown Leavenworth in that area, that specific area, it's the touristy district, there aren't dentists, there aren't medical facilities, but they're in a different area, right? Because they're needed, right? And they're all very important. But when you want to go and park a car and walk with your family, you want to get the most bang for your buck at some of those experiential things. And I don't know, I mean, nobody wants to start mandating where or not, but maybe encouraging certain businesses to be in a particular area so that that kind of experience can happen for families or out-of-towners. And then the necessity of medical real estate agents, things like that, that are important to the community are in an area that's not necessarily still current. I mean, because nobody's driving through going, oh, I'm going to stop at the
And again, a lot of that, you know, some of that's just an organic situation. One of the, it's widely recognized and discussed even in CEDIS that just from a, the horse got out of the barn a long time ago in terms of what got built in Covington, long before Covington was even incorporated as a city. You know, and so we have what we have to work with. How do we work with what we have towards, and thinking about growing towards greatness, I almost, I don't want to say too much on that because that almost answered the question I want some of you to answer later on. But that is, that's certainly a consideration. But I'll tell you, some of the more innovative cities I've seen recently, Lake Nona, if you want to see a really super innovative city that's basically they're, they're building from scratch. It's Lake Nona in Florida. They have incorporated all of the, all of the needs that people have into one really cool unified presentation. So the hospital is, rather than being on the outskirts, it's dang near right in the middle of town. And, and, but then it's right next to, you know, like a, I don't know, a a 1950s version food truck trailer, you know, so you're right, it's just, it's a funky, cool. You would think it wouldn't work, but it's actually really worked great. So some of it's creativity.
I was going to say, Isoplas is another good example of where that worked. It's that you've got the core downtown, the old part of town that's still very vibrant, even though they built the new Chinese finally. Shops down at the bottom, most to live at the top of that, so it's all waited a long time for those stores to come in. But it didn't detract, even though those new stores came in that everybody's really waiting for, it didn't detract from the downtown area. And they still have all their wine walks and their art shows and and that's kind of the downtown that I would be looking for, the uniqueness as Sean talked about and the walkability that Dad talked about. And yet taking care within our area, taking care of all the needs of our residents and drawing in those from outside. People want to come. We've got some cool eateries that are like nothing else. And I think the analogy of, using the analogy of an HOA is, it's really good because that's it's its own organization. You can set your own rules and boundaries. You can do things that the city necessarily couldn't do, like recruit more restaurants. That's not our job to do, but as long as you're, you're by laws, it was in the city rules and regulations, then that area actually has a downtown business association. If you look it up, read about it, it actually been in Isoplas.
Yeah, yeah, strongly.
Just a thought. I most recently, like Sean, I visited the village at Totem Lake. And I don't know if any of you have been there, but in Beth's comment, you know, about moving businesses out, it's an example of exactly how you brought them in. Because from Evergreen Hospital, you can walk to the village at Totem Lake. You have Trader Joe's, you have all of these. And if you think about that in Covington, you mentioned all the parking. And if you think about that in Covington, you mentioned all the parking, you know, that's sits off the main road, you know, how do you incorporate some type of a development like that, but yet leave your big boxes and your medical and everything? Cause that's where a lot of the business comes from are those workers. And so the walkability, I think of that is going to be critical to this. Covington's not so big that we shouldn't have a beautiful way to walk.
Yeah.
The whole area.
Yeah.
Or ride your bike.
So as, you know, and so that's where a downtown association can help because if I put myself in the seat of being a landowner and I know that there's a strong vision for the entirety of the, of the area that I am a landowner in, I'm more likely to invest redeveloping. And that's really what we're hoping for here. Is can we convince some of these larger landowners that it's a good idea to reinvest in this land? And to really think about, you know, Totem Lake, for example, is a complete redevelopment of, you know, from Totem Lake Mall, which is a dying form of commerce. So can we help some of these larger business owners understand that reinvestment in their property is a good idea?
How much involvement could the downtown association get to develop the town center? As kind of like, almost like a master plan of kind of what the downtown association is trying to go for, because that's lay a blank slate. You know, that we get to create and say, okay, you know, maybe by involving the downtown association in that piece of property somehow, like the vision, the development. That can be kind of a shining example and then it kind of.
Oh, you're talking about the.
Yeah, the city hall.
The city of, yeah.
Or is there kind of best practices of how a city and downtown work together on that?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that there's a best practice. I've, I've not seen anything where a downtown association dictates like city development, right? Um, they, they can get to a point eventually, in fact, the top point of that pyramid is advocacy, right? That is a long way out for, for this group, I, I think, based on kind of the, the steps that we can go up. But if I think of what I, what you're, I understand what you're saying Scott is, could the downtown association dictate what the, what the city development looks like on that property?
Well, and I think, I mean, assuming the town center is going to be part of the downtown core, you're already a stakeholder, probably one of the most prominent and important stakeholders. So why, why not make that, you know, kind of a, you know, tag along initiative? We really need to get this piece of property, right?
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. It, it's our biggest opportunity because it's everything else we're talking about is already developed. So we're hoping for redevelopment. This is our biggest opportunity to hit a home run and to really, um, generate the momentum that we're seeing. To present a piece that's in the image of what we're trying to do. Absolutely. Couldn't agree more.
You, Renton did that. I mean, that was a bunch of car lots thirty years ago. It's changed.
Yeah.
But it took time.
Takes time.
I just want to mention one thing, everyone keeps saying walkability, walkability is great except for when it's raining. And we have a lot of storefronts that you, for example, Safeway, you walk out of Safeway and you can't walk down to Rite Aid, whatever it is now, without getting wet. You can't go from Safeway to Palmar without getting wet. And I don't know how many days it rains here a year, but it's a lot more than the sunshine. And another thing on walkability, um, the way the parking lot is designed between Costco and Fred Meyer, you can't park at Fred Meyer and go to Costco without taking the long way with your car to get back. And they could easily put in something.
So what, in that, again, you're describing an initiative that a downtown association could, could manage.
Right.
Where we talk with our, our members and, and if our intel, if our research, if our, if our, um, relationship with the consumer is telling us that walkability is important, which I believe that it is as well. Then we start having those conversations where we start having a discussion with, right now, just try. Regan and I are just trying to, to meet the new manager of Fred Meyer and it is not easy. So, so we, I don't even think about getting the two managers of this, those two locations together and saying, hey, wouldn't it be interesting if we created a little walkway? You know, like, so this organization would have that conversation or, hey, guys, what are some easy ways for us to provide cover for people? To, to move between our stores and not get soaked in wet? That could look.
So just a quick question then with, what, what would the status be of the down, it's non, it's a nonprofit, but it's not a five oh one?
I do not know the answer to that question. We are going.
There's a hundred different.
Okay.
Yeah. And one of the first things we have to do is engage an attorney that specializes in these kinds of organizations to set, to get us set up appropriately.
So is that something where you potentially could ask for Ecomer, Washington's Department of Commerce loan, uh, loans or grants to help improve? Is that, is that something you all can do as a separate entity or is it just? Okay, alright.
But I would, I would love to see if we can try. Yeah.
Um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, I was just kind of going off the other conversation about the walkability, um, uh, on some of the redevelopment, I, I think the city has requirements for cover over some of them or to break up the facade. And if we don't, we can, you know, put those in as development agreements or things like that. Um, Fred Meyer and Costco, you know, tough with the two large multinational corporations, but ultimately what I, I think with Josh, what you're saying about the downtown association. You can do the long-term thinking about how do we identify it's in their best interest? What is the thing that makes, make it easier for your customers to go back and forth, you know, that, because right now it is a little ice, if I'm going to Fred Meyer, you might, it's a.
If you already parked at Fred Meyer.
You're staying.
At the gardening inn.
Yeah.
You gotta move your car.
So, but I was. Say, or that's really, that's a slog, although a hundred years ago, it took them six months to get across the country. So it's all in perspective. But, um, um, one of the things I also think we, once we get this going and it's down the road and a brand's starting to fire here. The, um, looking for partners like the Master Builders Association, they're looking for places to build more houses. And so if you have an incentive to say, hey, build, move your business, go to the road and you could build up the top two floors as townhouses or whatever and sell it, you know, sell your property again. Though you're going to get the master builder saying, we're all for it, we'll help you and downtown association, the businesses will be saying that. And we'll be meeting what the state wants us to do with diversifying our, our housing. So, um, I think there's an opportunity here and, um, we do have what we have. You know, I was looking at, thinking about, well, what is it about those other cities that, you know, we've kind of mentioned that makes it attractive? But one of the things is it's not on a major thoroughfare going right through town. Renton, it's just, it's a side street, it's a one-way street.
Yeah.
You know, that makes it feel more comfortable, kind of like, oh, I'm just going to run across the street now and go to that store. That's not going to happen here.
No, but they're on both sides of, of Kentangley, there's a lot of land and as you were talking, I just looked down at our map. The amount of actual buildings to open land that we would call parking spaces is real, it would be really interesting to do a, just a general, how much of this space is actual buildings and how much of it is parking lot? There's a lot of usable land here that's probably not being used in the most efficient way. As a landowner, there's got to be some incentive to use that land better. So, so for sure.
Anyway.
So, um, just back to the point of walkability and Kathy, is there are some compelling reasons why we have to move our city. We've got senior housing now in two locations and whether those people want to or not, they're walking. Then they're walking across the street to go to Safeway. People behind Safeway are walking over to go to Safeway and so for that.
Wouldn't it be nicer to do it without getting wet?
Well, of, of course, yeah. But I think it's, it's just a thing that really pre-pounds us to, to look at how do we make our city more walkable? Because not just for those of us that want to walk, you can have that house through the kids' side.
The, the market is smart though. We have to remember that we're talking about developing an association of self-regulating people that are wanting to do what's right for the market, right? Because if you do what's right for the market, you get, there's, there's more value to the businesses and to the landlords. So there's two ways of looking at this. What the city can do to help kind of nudge that kind of activity. And then with the conversations that we can have at a global level, help people understand just how important walkability is. Because at their individual spaces, I can tell you, I, outside of Justin, I'm really good friends with another landlord in Covington. And I don't think he has the global understanding and vision of how important walkability is. But if we're able to communicate to him through an organization like this, we can start to have that confidence.
That's it. You got to partners and voices that they respect. So.
Yeah, exactly.
They'll hear the message.
Yep. Yep. Yeah. Um, the next couple of items are pretty quick and I want to make sure we have enough time for some general dialogue. So.
If you want to do number four, you may want to skip.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I, I'll take one minute to explain items number two and three. The business to business item is just, uh, letting you know that um, beyond some of these bigger things we're working on in CEDIS, we're also doing some granular work of trying to reach out and connect with our businesses and understand, um, maybe what, what their ideas are around Covington going for greatness, what their needs are as a business, where they find where they're finding success, where they're finding challenges. So we're just doing that work. Um, we've also broken ourselves into some, doing some committee work, um, on the third page. Um, we've got the, we've got a clean, uh, committee where they're focusing on what are some things we can do to keep um, Covington, uh, as it relates to the commercial district clean. Uh, we've got a communication group, uh, that's focusing on how do we communicate, um, in absence of advantage of association currently, how do we communicate to our businesses, some of the ideas we have towards making Cov- Covington a better place to do business? And then there's a beautification group that's having those conversations with, uh, I don't know, public, so I should say various businesses that could use a little discussion around, hey, all the other kids are doing this, wouldn't it be fun if you did it too? Uh, type of conversation.
You could be prettier.
Yeah. Wouldn't it be cool if, uh, which by the way, publicly I do want to say thank you to Fred Meyer. Uh, they just went through a major beautification of their front area and it looks awesome. Um, oh my God. So good job, Fred Meyer. Um, that, so we're, we're doing that work as well. So.
I'm curious if you have considered adding an admin subcommittee to be in charge of this, this prep work for a nonprofit, um, just.
Yeah, it's an unspoken, that's an unspoken, yeah.
We have one.
We have one.
Thank you.
We could use some help. Um, Justin Van Lanshew, who is on CEDIS as well, um, and personally can make a good skill. Um, he has been very helpful in this and, uh, Regan's been very helpful. And so between Regan, myself and Justin, thanks to us, we hope to grow from that place. Yeah, thank you. We do need a little more help. So, yeah.
We're trying.
We're trying. Well, so, um, you know, I've been through a couple of these sessions now, having been involved in CEDIS for quite a while now and um, one thing that would be very helpful to us is, um, as I mentioned before, um, the growing toward greatness slogan or, or motto or whatever it might be is super powerful in my mind. I think it's a very unique, um, position for a city to take. Um, I think it exudes a great deal of optimism and, um, and the idea that we're just getting started, which is unusual, an unusual place, an advantageous place for a city to be. Um, and so as CEDIS is doing this work, I think it would be exceptionally helpful and some of this has been answered for, for us tonight with some of you. Um, but there's a question in item number four, which is what is your twenty-year vision for the commercial identity of Covington and more specifically our downtown core? And this is this, the idea is the best, if we're thinking about backfilling this marketing campaign, the best form of marketing or branding is to be or do what you say you are. And so what is that? So if we think we're growing towards greatness, twenty years from now, what is greatness? And, and really how can we, and that would be helpful because that helps CEDIS really start to draw, help drive businesses in that.
Is that in council or?
Uh, specifically council, but to be honest with you, the chamber board, uh, is the other side of CEDIS and I'd be happy to hear what they have to say as well.
So as we were talking about downtown association, I was doodling on my map of things I would like to see when it comes to a twenty-year plan. First thing that comes to my mind though is new facades on every building down our downtown core. And if not for anything else, it's a beautification thing. We don't have a, as much as I'd like to see him go closer to the roads. I don't think that's happening in twenty years. Um, but if, if you look at our buildings, they're all kind of plain and boring. And that's not, I hope that doesn't take offense to any of you who have built things along Two Seventy Second, but they're all very plain and they all could, I, they're not, they all got that boxy feel to it. And that, and that to me would just mean making something better out of it and what we can do. But also, um, as we were talking about open space in there, I just went through and found, it's like, there's a lot, there is a lot of open parking space that we have there that I am sure in the twenty plus years that I've been coming in and out of Covington, I've never seen a car in some of those places. Um, and this could even go back into some SEPTED principles too, like the back corner of Walmart.
Yeah.
Where you can't see anything from anywhere. We just take that out and build other businesses there or other buildings or something like that, making some of those areas and making them into usable land that produces, uh, jobs and revenue for the city. That would be great. And so I, I've got a few places marked on here then, along the city. But that, that's my, my vision is using this land to be usable and profitable.
Yeah, thank you. Um, as I was thinking twenty years, um, the dream, the dreamer in me and the realist in me, which is like totally battling now. And I can't think twenty years ahead without thinking, oh my gosh, the last three, four years without us having seen that. And, um, what I think having been, well, have to do, because, because the ball is still rolling. We don't know when we'll be in five years and there's a good chance that, um, pressure, outside pressure might get even harder also. I don't want to say worse, right? So, um, battling against the grain is something that is, but then I have to, it, it will be physical as well, but it has to be up there. And when I think from everything that I've heard, to me, I keep hearing words standard, 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 um, the standards just they have to be higher, whether that's, whether that's in our, you know, business core. And that, and I mean, that like goes into the, not just in the outside, not in just the venue of it. Um, each business needs to have a high standard, what like even from, not just from, I don't want to say from who they import, but it's, it's hard to find employees right now. That's, that's no secret. Um, but to get in place and in community to, um, to just take. I still think that the standards need to be incredibly high there. Um, thank you for touching on SEPTED. That was a big one in my, my mind. If we, once we actually, we have so many dreams right now and I love that, I absolutely love that we are growing towards greatness. It's absolutely in our future, but once we incorporate more SEPTED principles, then that, that's all vision. Um, that's not just, it's, it's a, it's a visual avenue to a much higher goal. Um, I think those, I mean, you can't take the gray away from the buildings. I mean, you can, assuming the, the owners are willing, ob- obviously they're going to explore it around. But, but, but what we can do around that and in between that is absolutely an option. And um, I just keep coming back to like the standard. Um, we have to set a standard and not budget. That's the thing. It's the it's the not budget with whatever society is doing around. It's it's difficult, but we're. I feel like instead of growing, we're trying to maintain sometimes, sometimes, you know, and and that's not our fault a lot of the times. But but that doesn't mean that we can relax. Um, and I would love to see, I don't know if I'll be there, I don't know who will be there. An amazing relationship between this new organization that I think will have to have hold a lot more weight. There is nothing wrong with more rules. I I, if we have a vision and it is a good one, um, that's okay. We already have, I mean, we're making it possible for greatness, right? So let's let's make something possible and the we, you know, we talked about weeds and plants. The weeds just keep coming back, like no matter what. We can, if we focus on growing the good thing, that's awesome, but then learn weeds. It's a non stop process. So.
It's true, but I the the guy that takes care of Safeco Field or whatever it's called, Keemo Park, said, we don't have weeds because our grass is so thick, the seeds can't get to the ground and then sprout.
I would.
We're gonna grow our grass so.
I need some of that grass, I heard.
The weeds can't make it.
Yeah, they have seven minutes.
Um, well, I already talked to some of this. I I had thought about this earlier and um, I think if we're continuing to provide a variety of small and large businesses. But some new business as well with the artists, all the cookie cutter um. I, small businesses, like no, no turn on on our cookie store. Um, and then with restaurants, if we could, like, if your HOA type tools can limit the number of fast food restaurants in town. And really focus on recruiting some top name restaurants. We need to be known for something more than our our row of of drive through. Um, fast food, but a couple of anchor nice restaurants. And that we just focusing on focus on meeting, continuing to meet the needs of our residents that attract me from outside and then as well. Um, and then the walkability, um. And I walk with an umbrella.
I never carry a. I play golf and I don't play.
Yeah, yeah.
I go home.
Um, so I would like having a tension with paintings and the things that I have. That would be the practice, pretty much everything I need to break.
Mm hmm.
Five minutes to my house, leave my neighborhood full of evergreens.
Mm hmm.
And drive five minutes to Costco, Fred Meyer, the orthodontist, the hospital. I I want all of that to stay. I want to see the trees when I get off the freeway. I want to see the blue side. Um, but I would like, as everyone's been saying, walkability, I'd like to see biking, I'd like to see trails. I'd like to see um outside dining. I'd like to see um. Increased public transit, um, I'd like. Um, more art, whether that be physical art or interactive art in the form of concerts and entertainment that gets people out and about. Um, and just a general sense of pride. And I think it was at our, they probably mentioned. Someone who made a comment, they want like people to be jealous.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I love it.
No, I, yeah.
I love it.
Yeah. Um, a couple of things, I just echo what everyone's saying. I really like what Jennifer just said about fact that there's only a couple of things that. You have to go out of town for, um, I mean, we still have a car dealership there, but uh, um. So I do like that too. I want to mature and keep that um ability to do most everything in Covington. Um, in twenty years, it's funny, we ask people to apply for all of our missions, see what we'd like to see in Covington in ten years and. Um, so in twenty years, I'd like to see a sustainable, self perpetuating downtown core. That's diverse in its retail and restaurants and a mix of those, small and large. Um, I'd like, whatever we're calling it, the downtown core to be refreshed, um, so that it it looks more attractive. Um, one of the things I do notice here that's a little missing is. Maybe a little counter to what Jennifer just says, I I think there need to be more trees. It just, it's, you know, it's mostly parking lots. Um, and as we were going, I was just thinking about some of the cities that we just talked about and and have their kind of own unique identity. Um, and what was it? So Renton, I just realized, well, what attracted me that it was all diverse stores, so really interesting. Wenatchee has this downtown walking thing. I mean, it's all art. And so um, Leavenworth's got a theme. And Spokane, I just had a, what do I have a giant park in the middle of its downtown? So I think we can do all those things, but I'm just seeing if we can get small elements of those. My daughter, well, again, when she went, she's like, look at that fire hydrant. They painted all their fire hydrants. It's little tiny things like that that just get people's attention. And we don't have to fix it all today, but if we start painting our fire hydrants tomorrow, twenty years, we'll have the new storefronts refreshed. But people are like, God, that would be really cool. It's always been like that. So, um, you know, um, so those are just some of the things I'd like to see in twenty years. Basically, you wouldn't, if we were here now, we wouldn't recognize them.
I spoke a lot, art, walkability, diversity, bringing people in and growing towards greatness is is great in this context. As somebody who lived here, it was already great, quality wise. Greatness big, bringing people in, important, but looking to change that so that it's in, when people see Covington and that and they're an out. Side person, they choose to come to Covington to spend their dollars because we have something catchy and to offer. So I think maybe thinking about like that in twenty fifteen years.
No, really quick, because I already mentioned that the village at Totem Lake. But I think of the vision, what I would love to see uh is that there's more social. And the social means, like they have big, open places where you can sit with fireplaces. They have restaurants, they have coffee shops that are different and unique. They have smaller trendy shops like Ever Eve and um Athleta and all of those that draw that. We we're in a restaurant and uh we got there early and by the time we left, an hour later, the place was full of families. And so it's just more social place to go to be together, families, community members.
Great.
Well, thank you all very much. I always enjoy our joint sessions.
Me too. I learn a lot more and great to see all of CEDIS here in the chamber. So thank you all very much. Great ideas.
Great to look forward to getting together again soon.
Right on. All right. Thank you. Yeah.
Go Kraken.